Call to order the regular meeting of the Parkway Board of Education for January 12, 2011. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mrs. Mogerman.
Yes, Mrs. Kalanda is ill tonight, so I have some big shoes to fill, so bear with me here.
Good luck.
Thank you. Roll call, Mr. Applebaum.
Here.
Mrs. Castillo.
Mrs. Feldman.
Here.
Mr. Jacob.
Here.
Mrs. Mogerman, here. Dr. Sortino.
Here.
Mr. Major.
Here. Thank you. 3.0, special recognitions in the category of self-licking ice cream cones. Board of Education Recognition Week. Call on Dr. Senti.
We have a very special recognition. Missouri School Boards Association has designated January 23rd to 29th to be School Board Recognition Week, and we're pleased tonight to recognize our board members. Being a school board member, I don't know if anybody's been one in the audience, but it is sort of the ultimate volunteer. They are paid absolutely nothing for their service. A lot of people actually think school board members receive some sort of a stipend. They don't. And often the recognition they get is only if something goes wrong. That's often when school board members and superintendent for that matter get their name in the paper. So they do this really from the goodness of their heart and for the kids that are in the school district. And we really, really appreciate that. So tonight we have, oh, there's a, we're not going to do the proclamation, but there is one, and they'll all get a copy of that. But we do have some gifts to give to each school board member, and I will call on an administrator for each of the board members, and they'll come and present the gift. So first, for Dr. Sam Sortino, Bonnie Maxi has his gift. For Bruce Major, Doc, not Doctor yet, Desi Kirchhoff has his gift. Helen Castillo could not be here this evening. She's also, yep. Kathy Blackmore for Beth Felbin. Steve Columbo for Chris Jacob. Wes Garten for Tom Applebaum. Okay, let's give them all a round of applause, please. I believe there's a picture to be taken. Is that correct, Paul? No? No picture? Okay. All right. Well, thank you, School Board, for your service.
Thank you, Dr. Senti. Additions, corrections, and modifications to the agenda. Dr. Senti, we have none, is that correct? That's correct. All right. 5.0, citizen statements. I do have a sign-up sheet. And we will start with Bridget Dodds. And if you'd come forward, state your name and address for the record. And then, given that we have 13 sign-ups, request that you keep your remarks to three minutes.
Gotcha.
And the official timekeeper is to my left here.
Okay. My name's Bridget Dodds. Do you want me to verify my address?
Please.
Okay. 12485 Don Hill Drive, Maryland Heights, Missouri, 63043.
Thank you.
I'm here today to voice my concerns about the proposed start and end times of the elementary school day. My colleagues and I have compiled the following concerns that we would like to share with you tonight. We're particularly concerned McKelvey's start time would be 9:10 a.m. to 4:05 p.m. Dismissal will begin at 4:05 p.m. However, this process takes about 20 minutes due to the lack of parking and space at our older schools. I'm concerned with the amount of time VST will spend on the bus because they will be traveling during peak traffic times. I'm also concerned for their safety since they will be arriving home in the dark. The proposed start and end times would not allow for after-school activities. Not only would this mean that our young students could no longer participate in educational enrichment activities such as chess club and math science, but staff mentors would not be able to participate in activities with their mentees, which are at-risk students. If our school attempted to have before-school activities, we would also undoubtedly have less children involved in our before-school tutoring program that's designed to boost student achievement. Thirdly, I'm deeply concerned that children's attendance rates will decrease and their tardy rates will increase due to doctor's appointments. Many doctors are only available 9:00 a.m. through 5:00 p.m., and obviously, if students are not present at school, they'll be missing valuable academic time. It's also possible that educators will be caught in a similar situation before to schedule doctor's appointments during school hours. Colleagues and I have discussed at length that we consistently experience a lack of focus from students as the day goes on. The students are much more alert and responsive in the mornings than in the afternoons. By starting our elementary school day later and adding 20 minutes to the end of the day, our students would have little to no focus, and the extra time spent in school would not be full of learning opportunities, which is ultimately our goal, but rather unproductive wasted time. I sincerely invite you with open arms to pop into my classroom in the morning one day and then drop in again after 2:00 p.m. I think we're all here for the same reason. We want to help kids learn, and the proposed start and end times may save our district money, but I think we have to ask ourselves, is this truly what's best for kids? Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, and you will receive a reply in writing. Call on Jen McCurdy. And again, if you'd state your address.
Hi, Jen McCurdy, 12141 Land O' Lakes Drive, 63146.
Thank you.
It's me. Hi, and thank you for listening to me. I am a mom of two boys, ages two and five. My five-year-old will be starting kindergarten this coming fall. We are newbies to the district, and I have become increasingly concerned both with the potential mandatory full-day kindergarten starting in less than nine months, as well as the lack of information and preparation given to families by one of the most respected public school districts in the state of Missouri. My husband and I purchased a home in the Parkway District, having faith in the Parkway system, to prepare our children for their future goals. And now it seems that while it is clear that this district is concerned about academic achievement, and I do appreciate that, but it's also very impressed with the increased possible revenue from school lunches and a decreased middle-of-the-day bus routes. Perhaps I believe it's too busy consuming itself with the overwhelming picture of academic success instead of the individual needs of the early childhood community. My child is incredibly creative, intelligent, and also very passionate, meaning emotional. He is very sensitive, and transitions are very difficult. He attends preschool just three mornings a week. He still takes quiet time and naps while his younger brother sleeps. He requires simplicity and preparation time for change, and I question his success in a full-day kindergarten, especially during a year of such big transitions all across the district. As I skimmed through the Project Parkway report, I was amused to find that responses were even reported as to what a parent would actually do with their child after only a half-day of kindergarten. Yes, a listed response such as going to the zoo is true and appropriate, but perhaps the most needed response is simply to give them the opportunity to be a child while they can, to play, to rest, build a castle with mommy, or read a story to their younger siblings. Where did the simple times go to just be a child? In addition to being a mom, I am a graduate student pursuing a doctoral degree in birth psychology and community counseling. An overwhelming amount of research states the need to adequately prepare our young children for transitions. I would be glad to provide research citing appropriate data to back up my statement, but in general, we are finding that more and more, while academic success is important, creating an emotionally intelligent child is paramount. In other words, teaching them to feel safe in their own skin is important, and pushing them too early, and one of my big fears of pushing a full day when a child is not prepared for a full day, is detrimental to their success. On top of the potential longer day my son may be exposed to in Parkway, I have come recently to learn that my particular school, which is Craig Elementary, is potentially not even the school he may attend. We are within walking distance to Craig, yet he might not go there, and we might not know where he's going to go for some time. When are parents going to be in the know to start helping our children prepare for this transition to kindergarten? I want my child to love school and to own his experience. It would be helpful to place that experience in a building that he can actually visualize up the street from our house. I'm in a quandary. I respect this district. I'm a graduate from right up there, from Parkway Central, and I feel it gave me a great knowledge base, and I'm excited to be in this district. But I am beginning to question the inner workings of this educational system, and am now investigating private schools of which we can't afford, and trying to make decisions that we have to make in the next couple of weeks, and it's very difficult for our family. I respect the concept of full-day kindergarten and feel that in a few years, it will be a shining star for this district. But as a parent and a researcher, I ask that you give us time for this transition. Even just one more year of offering half-day kindergarten helps families adjust to this new way of going to school. Helping children get started with their best foot forward in school creates the blueprint for success, and I hope this district acknowledges the importance of preparing our most precious stars for the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and you will receive a reply in writing. If you give that to Mrs. Mogerman. Call on Doug Rayner. Good evening, sir, and if you would, state your address for us.
Yes, I will. My name is Doug Rayner. I live at 13226 Damas Court in Old Farm Estate subdivision. I am here tonight acting for many of my neighbors, including Bob Parker, who has been serving as our spokesperson with Parkway. The property taxes of our 558 homes contribute significantly to Parkway's revenue, and we are proud of the education you provide our children. Parkway also does an excellent job of grounds maintenance, including mowing and removing dead trees from Fern Ridge School strip of land that's soaked sharply down to Old Farm Estate Drive, and we thank you. Tonight, you are considering entering into a license agreement with Old Farm Estate's trustees, which transfers all maintenance costs and liability exposures on this hazardous slope to us, the homeowners, and Old Farm Estate subdivision. We object to this proposed spending of our dwindling homeowners' assessment dollars for the services Parkway now provides. Tree removal alone exposes us to $900 per tree, or over $18,000. The agreement also shifts to us all of the liability risk for damage to persons or property on this hazardous slope, a risk we cannot afford. For these reasons, we oppose this license agreement. We have never given our support for it to Old Farm Estate trustees and continue to voice our concerns tonight. Bottom line, we as homeowners are not obligated to maintain insured property that we do not own. This proposed license agreement is double taxation. It does not maximize our home values, and it does not support our relationship with Parkway School District. We respectfully request that the Parkway Board abandon any initiative to enter into this ill-advised license agreement and that Parkway continues to maintain its own property. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, and you will receive a reply in writing. Call on Linda Springmeyer. And if you could, state your address.
I live at 1943 Beacon Grove. I'm a resident of the Old Farm Estate subdivision. Tonight, I want to voice my concern about Parkway School District signing an agreement with our trustees, allowing them to maintain Parkway property at our subdivision entrance. This brings additional burden to our homeowners for the cost of insurance, mowing, mulching, watering, and tree removal when necessary. This increases our liability exposure. There may be legal issues involved as to whether eight trustees have the right to do this without the consent of 558 homeowners. I would like to request a copy of this agreement if you decide to sign it, and any insurance policy you may require of Old Farm Estates to enable us as homeowners to oppose the agreement and pursue this matter further. I also would like to add that I concur with Doug Rayner's statements. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and you will receive a reply in writing. If you would, state your address.
Yes, my name is Bob Gates, and I live at 1635 Hobnail Court in Old Farm Estate subdivision. First, I would like to state that I concur with Doug Rayner and Linda Springmeyer's statements. I would also like to address the description of the Parkway property as indicated in the license agreement that was posted on your website. I was a home builder and developer from 1974 to 1999. I am certainly not an authority on hills, slopes, and grades, but I do have a little experience in this area. The hillside has been referred to in your proposal, proposed license agreement, as a slightly steep hill. That would be pretty accurate if one was wearing the proper hill-climbing boots while navigating this hill. The steepness of this hill is nothing less than treacherous when you attempt to operate a piece of machinery on a hill that is this steep and is rutted as much as this one is. Add the irrigation water, and it only gets worse and is even more dangerous. This is an accident waiting to happen. As a homeowner in Old Farm Estates, I am not now, nor will I ever be willing, to accept the exposure to lawsuits or claims should someone get hurt maintaining this hill. Through our taxes, Parkway School District has sufficient funds, employees, equipment, insurance, and whatever else is needed to maintain this property in accordance with the St. Louis County codes, which is all that we ask. As I feel the district does a great job in maintaining their properties, please continue to do so on this property. I thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir, and you will receive a reply in writing. Call on Laura Finlenson. And if you would, state your address.
Yeah. Sorry, I'm a little shorter than, and I'm really nervous. My address is 417 Algonquin in Baldwin, 63011. And, okay, I'm just going to read this. My name's Laura Finlenson. I have four children, ages eight, seven, four, and two. We live in the Claymont Elementary School jurisdiction, and my concern tonight is also with the full-day elementary program. Full-day, or full-day kindergarten. Full-day kindergarten has been proven an effective method to catching up high-risk students in many districts across the country. However, none of these studies or statistics is especially relevant in West County, Missouri. It's a stretch to present that future ACT scores, as you might remember were mentioned in the study that they, that the task force just presented, that future ACT scores might hinge upon the length of a kindergarten day. It's much more likely those results came from a total package in which kindergarten plays only a minor role. Parkway is a socio-economically homogeneous district with very few ESL students, which is a large portion of the students that do really well with full-day kindergarten, and is already testing well in comparison to other Missouri schools. In fact, the district's outranking Parkway are evenly divided in full-day and half-day kindergarten programs, which I believe further shows no clear academic advantage. Assuming misinformation, if we remove the comments from the parent survey indicating concern their children are being academically left behind, we are almost left entirely, and this is just those that made comments, I'm sure it doesn't represent everybody, but we're almost left entirely with parents expressing their desire for the program for their own convenience as a single-parent or dual-income household. In a full, if full-day kindergarten is primarily a matter of what's best for parents, then let's just say so and get on with it without wrestling academics into an equation that doesn't add up. Convenience is not a horrible reason to consider modifying or changing its current options to better meet the needs of Parkway residents. I think that's a fine reason, if that's a reason. But if it's not academic, then allow us to keep our half-day program as well. Where studies are inconclusive about the effects of full-day kindergarten, more and more studies are emerging on the effects of overscheduling kids and the loss of early childhood free play in our busy world. This phenomenon is often linked to the rise in ADHD and perceived learning disabilities. Also, my mom is a member of a school board in Utah, and they enjoy sisterhood with many districts in China. They visit China, their board members visit here, they share, you know, questions and concerns. It's great. But as often as Utah districts ask the Chinese how we can improve our test scores, they ask us how we promote creativity, innovation, and risk-taking in our students. Not all successes can be measured through standardized testings, and not all failures can be measured the same way. Everyone has their beliefs, but I strongly prefer a half-day kindergarten option as one who believes in the importance of free play and who has the opportunity of providing this for my kids. I understand that isn't an option for everyone, but as one who believes it is still the best option, if possible, I think it would be a tragedy to take that from those of us who can provide their children this luxury. I'm also not convinced alternative options were fully explored. Rather than incurring the expense of free full-day for everyone, why not institute financial and academic need-based scholarship programs to help children and families who could benefit most? Or if the funding is there-
Okay, I hope you wrap it up where your past three minutes.
I'm sorry, I've got two more lines. If the funding is there, investigate an option that would reduce the cost parents are asked to shoulder for full-day kindergarten. Hire teachers to reduce class sizes. Class sizes and parental involvement are proven indicators of success while full-day kindergarten is not. I respectfully request the school board allow our children our childhood and keep the half-day option. Thank you.
Thank you, and you will receive a reply in writing.
My name is Stacy Barton. I live at 826 Kentridge Court, Baldwin, 63021. I'm tall enough, I'll be okay. I'm here to voice my support of full-day kindergarten. Kindergarten of today is the first grade of when I was a child. Children who come into kindergarten now are prepared for this academically, many are prepared socially, many have gone to preschool, but even those who have not really are ready for this. Children go into kindergarten knowing their alphabet, some knowing how to read. I'm the mother of an eight-year-old and a nearly five-year-old, and both of those children, I spent their entire first five years of their life preparing for them to be in kindergarten. A lot of the people I speak to who are against full-day mandatory kindergarten are concerned about the lack of choice, and I fully support them having choice, but my concern is that for those of us who want full-day kindergarten, should they enter into a lottery and not win that lottery, we've been, that choice has been removed for us. I notice as I visit my son, who's in third grade now, that there's a very much of a frenetic pace at school. Go, go, go. So I hear a lot about free play and the need for downtime, and I actually think extending to a full day of kindergarten will provide more of this for the students who are in school. And the other piece I have to say is, I think a lot of people feel that this has been a rush to make this move, and perhaps it has, but I have to look out for my own son, and my own son starts kindergarten this fall. He is a non-special needs child who is in a special needs school as a peer. He is reading, he is doing math at a first-grade level. I cannot have him in half-day kindergarten. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and you will receive a reply in writing.
Good evening. My name's Steve Radkowski. I live at 12015 Devon Air Drive, St. Louis, 63146. My wife, my wife and I would like to thank you for considering and bringing to a vote full-day kindergarten. As working parents, we appreciate having that option. As the previous speaker mentioned, without that, it leaves us in, it leaves us in a bad place because all of a sudden we have to look at private schools, and that may not be an option that we can necessarily afford. So we definitely do appreciate that you're bringing this to a vote and giving it consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, and you will receive a reply in writing.
Good evening. My name is Sam Craig. I live at 13135 Greenbough Drive in Old Farm Estate subdivision. I am here tonight representing the trustees of Old Farm Estate subdivision. I'm the president of the trustees, and I'm here to request your approval of the license agreement referenced in item 10.11. To give you a brief background, Parkway and Old Farm Estates have been neighbors for, as far as I know, over 30 years. The strip of land that's addressed in this agreement is on the Fern Ridge property. It's on the far western edge, to the west side of a fence that's right at the top of a rather steep hill that comes down to Old Farm Drive. Almost anyone you ask who would come into our subdivision, frankly, I moved into the subdivision thinking that this was Old Farm Estates' common ground. Until this question came up, we didn't know any different, frankly. I didn't know any different. From the beginning, going back to the best of my knowledge, going back to when the developer was even, had the subdivision, he was doing the maintenance on the ground, and the trustees have continued on with that process over the years. About three, during that time, we had some brief informal conversations with Parkway staff. There was kind of a, yeah, we know what you're doing, yeah, it's okay. Everybody just kept on doing what they were doing. About three to four years ago, some residents of our subdivision raised some questions about what we were doing, and it became apparent to the trustees that we need to have some sort of a formal agreement. Consequently, we entered into negotiations, and the license agreement is the result of those negotiations. Why should, why should we do this? This is in the best interest of both Parkway and Old Farm Estates. The ground will be maintained. It'll be maintained to a higher standard than it is now. Not that Parkway's doing a bad job, it's just it's in a very bad spot. You're not going to water it, you're not going to mulch it. You're going to do basic maintenance to it, which is what you've, what you've tried to do occasionally, but we've done most of the maintenance to it to this point. The agreement protects Parkway's interests. You have no additional liability. We're covered with insurance in case there should be any problem. We only use licensed contractors who are bonded. Both sides are protected, and I think it's in both of our best interests for this agreement, as do the trustees of Old Farm Estate subdivision. So we respectfully request that you approve the license agreement, and it's item 10.11 on your agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and you will receive a reply in writing. Lynn Rayner.
Good evening. My name is Lynn Rayner. I live at 13226 Damas Court. Bob Parker, who's my neighbor, sitting right here, is unable to read the following statement and asked me to do so for him tonight. He has a, he lost his voice. So I quote, "My name is Bob Parker." A little shorter. "I live at 1971 Beacon Grove Drive in Old Farm Estates subdivision. This is my citizen's statement in opposition to the proposed license agreement between Parkway School District and the Old Farm Estates trustees. For over three years, I have been communicating with my fellow homeowners, the Old Farm Estates' Board of Trustees, and Parkway School officials regarding Old Farm's maintenance of Parkway's property. On Parkway's website tonight, for tonight's meeting, under section 10-11, quote, 'approval of the agreement of Old Farm Estates,' Wes Garten states, and I quote, "The subdivision trustees approached the district earlier this year, having resolved their disagreement with an unhappy homeowner. If I'm referred to as the unhappy homeowner, this is simply not true. There are many of us homeowners who are unhappy with this issue. We asked Mr. Garten to document the source he used to make this statement. It is my opinion we homeowners will never approve this license agreement. It makes no sense. We would, we would not, why would we spend our assessment money on Parkway's property? Why would we also expose ourselves to pay for insurance, deductibles, and claims on Parkway's property? The answer is, we would not. We strongly encourage Parkway to continue the first-rate maintenance on the Fern Ridge property, and we will continue to support you with our tax dollars and our very best wishes. Thank you so much."
Thank you very much, sir, and you will receive a reply in writing. Thank you very much, sir, and you will receive a reply in writing. Tiffany Clark?
Hello, good evening, I'm Tiffany Clark, address 12558 Glen Lee Drive, Merlin Heights, Missouri, 63043. As a new parent to the district, I knew nothing about the district, I'm not going to tell any stories, and I have a, I'm very supportive of all-day kindergarten. I am a kindergarten teacher for, actually fifth year, and I've taught second grade for two years. And from both sides of the spectrum, I really believe that students that attend kindergarten full day benefits because that requires so many high expectations now. It's not just ABCs, ones, twos, threes in place, I mean, you have to read, you have to write, and you still have that time for play. We still have free play time, they still get to socialize, and with kindergarten, it can take ten minutes to walk down the hallway, or it can take, you know, five minutes to find your seat, or, you know, ten minutes to stop crying the first day of school. And some of that time is waste, I mean, it's not wasted time, but it takes up from instruction. So when we have that extra time, we can teach more, they can learn more, they can learn from their peers, they can learn from their teachers, they get to meet other students, you get, have time for collaboration with other grades. So I'm highly, highly for full-day kindergarten as an educator and as a parent, so thank you.
Thank you, and you will receive a reply in writing. Now just to confirm, there were a couple of names crossed out. Lynn Rayner?
She ran.
You're, we've got you.
Thank you.
And all, you will both receive a reply. And then Mary Gosery?
That's right.
Did you want to make a statement, or, okay, just wanted to make sure that somebody else hadn't crossed your name out. I think that, nothing on the back, so I think that concludes our citizen statements. Thank you all very much. Call for a closed session, we have none. Approval of the agenda for January 12, 2011. May I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six oh. This meeting, we have the Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Day, January 17, 2011. School Board Recognition Week, January 24 through 28, 2011. African-American History Month, February 2011. American History Month, February 2011. Career and Technology Education Month, February 2011. Missouri Lifelong Learning Month, February 2011. National Girls and Women in Sports Month, February 2011. And National School Counseling Week, February 8 through 12. May I have a motion and a second to approve these resolutions?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six oh. 9.0 Communications, 9.01, update on the superintendent's search process. The process continues. We have completed the interviews, took a little longer than we anticipated, but we did complete the final interview last Wednesday. The vetting process continues, and there will be negotiation of contract thereafter. So my optimistic timeline from December is overcome by events. The reality is, we certainly hope to have an announcement before the end of January. So please bear with us. Obviously, a substantial undertaking for the board, and we will absolutely leave no stone unturned, and the work continues apace. So, Mrs. Mogulman?
I think we should, we should give special thanks, we had a number of members of our community and of the Parkway staff who participated in the interviewing process. They took a lot of time out of their day to do it, and it was hard work, and we really appreciate their input.
And the caliber of written input we received from those confidential committees was just highly illuminating for our consideration, so thank you again, that really helped focus our interview sessions also. 9.02, update on Board of Education filings. To date, we have three incumbents, Mrs. Mogulman, Mr. Jacob, and myself, who have filed. The closing date for filing for this election is January 18. 9.02, calendar of meetings, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education is scheduled for Wednesday, February 9, 2011, here at Central Middle School, starting at 7:30 PM-ish. 9.03, liaison reports. Anyone? Mr. Jacob?
I would just like to say I went to the open house for the new science wing that we have here, it's the only building that has two floors on this campus, and it was delightful to see what we've been able to accomplish there with the type of equipment and the space and the technology that they have, plus the two young ladies that took us around were very knowledgeable, happy, and of course, we met some of the teachers too, but I think it's going to be something, we're going to be very glad, and our students over the next several years will really get, it felt almost like I was in a university environment, and I think they feel that too.
Thank you.
If I can just add to that, the seniors that led our tour, the science wing, were so excited about the space that they got to use this year, but they were all saying how they wish they could, they could start over as freshmen so they could have this space for four more years.
One teacher told me that, I said, "Well, where did you teach last year?" And she said, "I taught in a closet."
Any other subjects, Beth?
I was invited to take a tour of the compressed natural gas fueling facility up at St. Louis Airport, Lambert Airport, and we're talking with Senator Claire McCaskill's office to see if there's any grant money available to potentially start looking at alternative fuel sources for the bus fleet here. And it was very illuminating to see this in action up there. It's a very large-scale facility, and they're about to build, and they've accepted a contract to make a public, open a public compressed natural gas fueling facility up at the airport, so it looks like it might be feasible here, but we'll see.
Thank you. Mrs. Mogulman?
Back to the science wing. It's very exciting to see that, and a couple of the teachers, when they saw my name tagged and that I was on the board, "Oh, we need to thank you so much for this, we need to thank," and I said, "You don't need to thank us, this was a no-brainer, you need to thank the taxpayers." So thank you taxpayers, because without the passage of Prop S, right? Prop S, the bond issue, this would never have happened, so thank you. Also, yes.
Here, here. Note of appreciation.
Also, I serve on the Board of Cooperating School Districts, we're also going through a search for an executive director, and I believe the initial process for a plot application closed on the 10th of January, and later this month, they hope to be starting interviews and hopefully will name a new director soon, so.
So you've done all your stretching exercises-
Oh, boy. I'm an expert now.
Dr. Sortino? Okay. Thank you very much. 10.0, action items. Consent, may I have a motion and a second to approve the action items? And are there any questions or items that should be pulled to action or closed before we vote?
Well, I think we ought to pull 10.11, Mr. President, just to hear a little bit.
And that's the agreement with Old Farm Estates, we'll pull that to action? Any other items?
We, I agree with that, I'm usually not surprised about issues, but I was about this one, so we need to look into that a little more.
Okay. Would you like to pull that to action, or?
No, just pull it to next-
Or remove it from the agenda completely?
From the agenda.
Okay. We'll remove that from the agenda for further consideration. No further items? So with the exception of item 10.11, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motions carry six oh. Any abstentions from the checks and wire transfers? Okay?
I'm sorry, I'm approving the wrong thing on the notes. There we go.
Ms. Klanda is Skyping in, she's-
I know, I'm sure she is, I'm going to be embarrassed.
11.0, action items? I guess we'll take a, if anyone else would like to depart, we won't be offended by your not sticking around for the rest of it. So with that, 11.01, approval of full-day kindergarten. Call on Dr. Maxey, Elementary Assistant Superintendent, Lisa Greenstein, Ross Elementary Principal, Mike Schmerle, Mason Ridge Principal, Liz Morrison, Coordinator of Staff- and Wes Garten, Chief Financial Officer. Good evening, do we have?
President Majors, Vice President Jacobs, Board Directors, Dr. Centi. At the December Board of Education meeting, we presented our recommendation for a tuition-free full-day kindergarten for all Parkway students to begin in the 2011-2012 school year. Tonight, we appreciate this opportunity to present our recommendation as an action item in support of a 21st century kindergarten for all future kindergarten students. We are using the Project Parkway House as the visual to emphasize this recommendation is grounded in the foundation of the district planning process, that is grounded in the mission of the Parkway School District is to ensure that all students are capable, curious, and confident learners who understand and respond to the challenges of an ever-changing world. That every kindergarten student has the maximum opportunity in Parkway to develop as a capable, curious, and confident learner. This recommendation is supported through each level of the district planning process, and we believe we have the support system to offer all future kindergarten students a 21st century experience. We are presenting the recommendation to you for the final step in Parkway's planning process. With the report in December, you gave us a head nod to move forward, so we have expanded the development of a comprehensive implementation plan, and tonight, our representative committee, whom Mr. Majors introduced, will provide additional information in response to your questions regarding the research findings, the implementation and monitoring plan, and the district-proposed funding plan.
Good evening. I would like to begin by showing a slide that Dr. Shea shared with many of you in 2009. She talked about accountability in regard to these three circles. In the middle, we are accountable to no child left behind and adequate yearly progress. The adequate yearly progress has a limited focus only on academic achievement for one year, a short-term outcome. The Missouri School Improvement Plan and the annual progress report has a broader focus, not only on academic achievement, but also on other outcomes, outcome measures which are short-term and medium-term for five years. Current educational practice and policy focused overwhelmingly on academic achievement. This achievement, however, is only one element of student learning and development. Parkway's accountability focuses not only on adequate yearly progress and annual progress report, but also on the long-term outcomes which support the whole child. This outer circle supports the work of Project Parkway and all of the parts of Parkway's house. We know that some of the research that we have found in regard to the impact of full-day kindergarten fits in the inner circle. We also know that there are many variables that impact this kind of data, which in some of the research studies we have seen have resulted in inconclusive results to the inner circle, yet still support the components of the outer circle, what we value in Parkway. Tonight, we will review some of the local, national, and international data that we have found, as well as introduce another document that contains research which you will receive tonight. We shared this graph, which shows that 531 public, state, and charter educational agencies are offering tuition-free full-day kindergarten programs. Twelve districts were offering a tuition-based full-day option, and only four districts had half-day only. Based on core informational data from the fall, there are three more districts that are now offering tuition-free full-day kindergarten. In speaking to personnel in the districts who do not have tuition-free full-day kindergarten, six of these which are in St. Louis County, they have all mentioned that they believe it is the right thing to do, but they are not financially able to offer tuition-free full-day kindergarten at this time. There are many international and national research studies that do show the positive effects of full-day kindergarten on children. There is a study from Canada that shows increased student success in multiple areas. A study from Australia that shows increased achievement in math. A study that includes information from Alaska, Indiana, Maryland, Pennsylvania, and Virginia that shows that full-day kindergarten helps to close the achievement gap. There's a study from Minnesota that shows that teacher perceptions that students who attended full-day kindergarten were better prepared in regard to social skills and emotional development. And tonight, you will receive information from Nebraska, which shows that learning social skills, emotion identification, and coping skills are some of the most important factors influencing the ability to learn academic concepts and generate new ideas. As one of the board members mentioned last month, it would be wonderful if Parkway in St. Louis, Missouri could be one of the districts and states highlighted in the research, and that is certainly our hope. We continue to find documents that support full-day kindergarten based on research findings, and at this time, you have just received a kindergarten for the 21st century kindergarten position statement from the Nebraska Department of Educational Offices of Education, which was published in May of 2010. We were very excited to see in the extensive bibliography many of the books, articles, and authors that our kindergarten study group has been studying and learning about. This paper supports what we have read about in many of the other research studies about the brain development of a young child, and how important it is to have ample opportunities in all areas of development in order to support children in gaining the skills and competencies that they need to become capable, curious, and confident learners who are able to respond to the challenges of the ever-changing world. These essential elements, which you see on the slide, are discussed in this paper in detail. For those of us who have taught half-day kindergarten and who are familiar with the half-day kindergarten day, we know that it is impossible to fit in all of these components into a half-day program, even though we know that research supports all of these pieces. We are recommending tuition-free full-day kindergarten for all students based on what we are held accountable for and what we believe in in the Parkway School District. At this time, Lisa Meredith and Liz Morrison will share the implementation plan that would
Good evening. As Lisa just shared, research has outlined important components of a 21st century curriculum for kindergarten learners. Previously, you received a copy of an implementation plan that was designed to implement and monitor the impact of full-day kindergarten in Parkway. As you were able to see in the plan, we have outlined enduring understandings and essential questions that will guide our work. Those include things such as, children are already ready to learn, and educators must be responsive in providing rigorous learning outcomes, or learning experiences. Kindergarten is about learning and transfer-
Kindergarten is about learning and transfer, not about learning how to do school. Children have a natural curiosity that must be fostered through a variety of learning experiences. In what teachers will know, you will notice that we have, that they will know and implement the value and structures of balancing play along with whole group, small group, and individual learning opportunities. That they will also understand and be able to implement expression through music, art, movement within the kindergarten. You will notice in the plan that we really do focus on the outer green circle, balancing the academics with the needs of the whole child. As a result of the plan, kindergarten teachers and administrators will have a deeper understanding of Parkway's guaranteed kindergarten curriculum, along with instructional practices and strategies that will ensure all students succeed. In stage two of our plan, you notice the performance tasks and other assessment evidence that we will collect to demonstrate the success of our work. During the 2011-12 school year, we will analyze the schedules of kindergarten classrooms in relationship to the instructional time and instructional strategies that will be outlined in the kindergarten framework. We will implement rigorous assessments that are developmentally appropriate, yet will help us monitor the achievement of all students. These will include things such as student work samples along with scoring guides, interviews, project work, and photographs of their explorations, all aligned to standards and scoring guides. Many of these are currently included in the curriculum, and as a result of full-day kindergarten, teachers will have adequate time to assess and adjust instruction to ensure high achievement. During the 2011-12 school year, we will survey parents, students, and teachers to gain data related to the achievement of our goals of full-day kindergarten. In addition, at the beginning of the 2012-13 year, we will interview or survey the first grade teachers to gain their perception of the knowledge and skills that the students bring to first grade. Finally, we will assess the benefits of full-day kindergarten through longitudinal analysis of our district common assessments and MAP scores. To achieve these outcomes, we will use the actions and strategies outlined in stage three of the plan that you received. These include gathering a small group of kindergarten teachers who will develop a framework based on the work of the kindergarten task force and committee that have been working through Project Parkway. That will include a statement of Parkway's beliefs about young learners. It will have an outline of the guaranteed viable curriculum that includes clearly identified learner outcomes. The framework will provide guidelines for instructional practices and strategies that will be used within our kindergarten program. These strategies will honor developmentally appropriate practices, yet support academic achievement. In addition, we will include a section that describes the interventions for our kindergarten to ensure that interventions such as EIS, reading intervention, ESOL, and special education are aligned to the curriculum. Also, the framework will include clear expectations for the use of time during the full day. As our young learners change throughout the year, the use of instructional time in kindergarten needs to be adjusted. The framework will include sample schedules for the beginning, the middle, and the end of the year, along with instructional minutes to guide teachers in their planning. This summer, kindergarten teachers will have an opportunity to work collaboratively to design additional lessons for the curriculum that will provide examples of learning experiences that will allow students the opportunity to transfer and apply their learning to new situations. In addition, the teachers will develop assessments, scoring guides, and rubrics that will allow for consistent monitoring of student development against agreed-upon standards. At this time, Liz will now share the development plan.
So as part of the implementation model, we have our development plan set up for our teachers. We start with the kindergarten, I'm gonna jump over in front of the microphone. Currently, we have the kindergarten study group that's going on right now, and that group has been meeting since last year, and it continues to develop their work on great practice in our kindergarten classrooms. To support full-day kindergarten, we are planning a summer institute for three days with our kindergarten teachers. We'll follow up with quarterly kindergarten grade-level meetings. We'll have grade-level collaboration facilitated by our district staff developers, salary credit opportunities for kindergarten teachers, and we'll also be offering a, during Learning by Design, our regular professional development for next year, we'll be offering courses specifically for kindergarten teachers. So we think we have a great development plan and implementation plan ready to move forward with full-day kindergarten. The next question, whoops, sorry, this one? Is on funding. One of the questions the board had asked last meeting was about funding, and classroom resources would come from, I like Wes's word, he says repurposing the budget, so we have funding available from our coordinators to make sure that the resources are available for the kids in kindergarten to cover those 16 additional classrooms. The kindergarten teacher's summer institute, repurposing funds from the staff development budget, and then Wes is gonna take it from there with the rest of the funding, so, thank you.
Excuse me, I'm a little taller than everybody else. The last question, I know that the board had asked us is, how are we gonna be able to fund this, and if we can do this without changing our budget or changing the tax rate in any way? And I'm happy to say that we have been able to do that. We've taken a really hard look at our budget, actually much earlier than we normally do, we usually start about January, but Dr. Senti had asked us to look at it, because this is such an important endeavor that we want to take upon, from, obviously, from the recommendations of Project Parkway. One of the things, you've seen this before, it's the full-day kindergarten, what's gonna actually take place? If we do have tuition-free full-day kindergarten, you will see a drop in revenue, because we won't be charging for full-day kindergarten anymore, so it'll be a drop of $1.6 million. Then also, we're gonna increase about 16 teachers and eight aides, that'll increase our salaries and our benefits by about $1.17 million. That total change will be about $2.77 million. In our budgeting process, we have, this is our proposed reallocation of our budget. You can see that we have totaled $3.1 million. The first item you can see is health and retirement. Traditionally, we take about 8% to 10% increase on an annual basis, and when we looked at our, took a closer look at our health and retirement, the actual increase is closer to 3%, and we were able to reduce that by $1 million. From a personnel standpoint, we have about miscellaneous personnel expenses that all total about $700,000. They're smaller, but during my budget presentation on February 9th, I'll give you a little bit more detail, we're working out the finalized details on that. From a transportation standpoint, one of the things you heard in the past is, obviously, without having half-day kindergarten, we'll be able to take out our midday runs. That's gonna save us about $170,000. In addition to that, we actually had our transportation fuel budgeted like it was '07, '08, '09 in that area, and our actuals came in much lower than that. They actually were moved from $1.75 million in that neighborhood to about $1.1 million. So we've reduced it to about $1.4 million, and as you can tell, over the last couple of weeks, we've had a little bit of bump, and that's really the reason why I wanted to leave it a little bit above what our actuals were from last year, is the unexpected that we do have in fuel. You never know where it's gonna go, and I think I'm pretty comfortable with where it is. Facilities, they have made a practice in the past of using really capital expenditures, some of their capital expenditures out of the operating funds. And I have asked Mike Mertens to look at his budget and move some of those capital expenditures over to our bond interest accounts, and he's been able to do that as well. So we'll be able to reduce our operating expenditures by $319,000. Our property and casualty insurance, you actually saw the umbrella insurance that you approved tonight, and then you approved the insurance last month. We have had favorable claims. Music is a consortium of school districts that takes care of our property and casualty insurance, and through that consortium, they've had favorable claims over the past few years. In fact, we had such a favorable claims, when our bill came in, we were able to take a look at it and adjust our budget for property and casualty down $250,000. The remaining portion of this, as you can see, are kind of a sundry look at, we actually looked at our past four years compared to our budgets, and you can see the different budgets that we actually were able to take this from, through kind of a belt tightening process, but one of the things that you can see is the breadth of where we took, you know, where we reduced. Everybody believes in this, in full-day kindergarten for Parkway. We think it's a number-one priority, and we all want to make it work, and I'm happy to report that we were able to do this without increasing our budget. And with that, I'm gonna leave it to Mike.
Thank you. As mentioned at the very beginning, we talked about our mission, and again, going right back. Mission of the Parkway School District is to ensure that all students are capable, curious, and confident learners who understand and respond to the changes of an ever-changing world. We began by sharing our accountability, Lisa shared with you, from a national, state, and local level. We also shared the research that demonstrates gains in both academic and social development gains for our full-day students. We also included the implementation plans as part of our work. We listened and gathered input from a broad representation of the members of the community through Project Parkway, the kindergarten study, and the kindergarten task force. Through the various committees, we've conducted, again, additional extensive research that found supportive evidence of the benefits of full-day program for all students. We also know that the highest achieving countries offer strong early childhood programs that include full-day kindergarten. We also surveyed the community, and we found 80%, again, 80% of the parents support a tuition-free full-day kindergarten program. As part of this presentation, we also included the funding information to identify where the additional monies would come from within our current budget. Again, Dr. Senti shared with us a long time ago now, the kid check, so thank you, Dr. Senti. He's used this to make decisions over the past several years, and as principal, the kid check urges us to do what's best for kids at the focus of all decisions. Specifically, we are responsible for student learning by knowing students well, valuing every child, and placing students again in the center of all decisions. In a recent workshop with Matt Glover, he stated, if the conditions are right, and we honor their approximations, they are already ready, and he's referring to students. It is with this in mind that we bring a recommendation to the board for a tuition-free full-day kindergarten program starting in the 2011-2012 school year. Thank you.
I'm assuming there might be a question or two, Mrs. Mogulman?
Thank you all, and thank you for clearing in my mind the questions I had about research. I think you signed and sealed it, and I appreciate that. Secondly, I think we need to mention, and Dr. Senti, you can help with this, it's not mandatory full-day kindergarten. It is full-day kindergarten, and we're hoping most people will take advantage of it, but a child is not required to go full-day, is that correct?
Parents that would like to keep their kids home half-day, feel free to do that.
Okay, and we'll have, some way, have to work that out.
We'll see how many, we'll see how many do that. In my experience, when districts go to full-day kindergarten, the first year, there's a few youngsters that stay at home with them in the family, but the next year, it's usually 100%.
Okay, thank you, I just thought we needed to point that out tonight.
Yeah, the choice is still there.
Yeah, and I think we all appreciate the numbers from the budget. This makes it a much easier decision from where we sit, I think.
Does the, the numbers from the budget, does that, does that take any of the flexibility out of, out of the projections that you made? Because it seems like, like you went back and reviewed some of the numbers, and were able to come up with those, with a lot of savings, which was great, but going forward, do you think that might cause any type of burden or any pressures down the road because of the flexibility that's taken out of that?
I'm confident it will not.
Okay, thanks.
Wes, before you sit down, I did have some. And I think there may be other follow-ups, so I guess focus on the money for the moment.
Sure.
I wasn't clear on your transportation numbers. On your slide, you showed 557,000, and I understood approximately 170,000 of that would be elimination of the midday bus runs.
That's correct.
Okay, and then you mentioned fuel, and that you had basically tightened up your projections there, since we're not in the '07-'08 price frame for fuel yet now. But how, how much are you, you're basically cutting your, cutting the fat in half there?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, when you look at it, too, it was about 1.7, 1.74, somewhere in the neighborhood for transportation. Our actuals ended up around 1.1 million. I said it at 1.4, knowing that there's some fluctuation in diesel fuel, and as you can tell over the last couple of weeks, it's probably weather-related more than anything else because of the northeast. But still, because of the unknown, and the price of where, a price of a barrel of oil is at $90 a barrel, I think it's better not to go all the way down to where we were last year. I think there's still some room where it could go up, it easily could go up, and it could go down, obviously, but I think there's some pressure definitely up.
Okay, so that's roughly 300,000 in the fuel. And then I note you also have in here some portion attributed to-
Starting in times.
-the changing the start times, and does that, does that assume a full, I mean, a rigid three-tier schedule?
You know what, it has a three-tier in it, but it's still, because we're still trying to tweak that, it's a limited amount there, you can tell the difference between that, it's pretty small right now. But as we are kind of working out whether it's a 45 or a 40-minute day, we're kind of trying to hone that in and get it better for you, but that's really the dollars that I have you right now on transportation, is what I'm comfortable with where we're going to be as far as we're gonna reduce.
Is there kind of a high and low range you've got in mind, depending on what?
Well, it depends, it depends on-
What's the maximum savings we might anticipate?
The maximum savings, I think at one point was about $200,000. Is that-
Wasn't that, where's, you remember starting in times?
Are you talking about if the tiering system goes-
Yes, the tiering system.
Depending on what the, if we were able to save ten buses a run, we were talking something between 200 and 400.
Yeah.
But that's, you know, if the transportation department didn't look at that, we're not sure.
Okay. That piece of it could be about 2 and 4.
Understand, that would be the-
That's right.
-the optimum, and then-
That's right. And- And work through some of the, you know, the observations and changes, and trying to work through. Versatrans, the company that we have, the program with, to try to get kind of zeroed in on what the savings could be.
Okay, and then obviously, the biggest number was the health and retirement projections.
Correct.
I guess we're six months into the, into the year.
Sure.
And so this year's looking good. Do we have any additional data regarding future-year projections? We kind of talked those through in the summer.
Sure, and I feel pretty comfortable, absolutely, and I'm still pretty comfortable with where we are. I mean, as far as, that's where, why we kind of adjusted, why we're adjusting the actual budget and benefits, because our claims, since we are self-funded- Because our claims, since we are self-funded, we're able to, you know, look at it, try to keep expenses down. And we've been way above trend, which trend is eight to 10%. And we're probably increasing about two to 3%. And so, with that, we were able to adjust the budget. So, I'm very comfortable with where we are on, on benefits as, as a whole, so.
Okay. And you think those will hold through, hold true going into the future?
Absolutely.
Despite uncertainty from?
Yeah, you know what? And we, and we work on that on a, on a yearly basis. That's one of the big things we need to do is, is just look at, at the benefits from every aspect of it and, and make sure that we continue to bid services, because I think that's important as well.
Okay. And then on the facilities, you said there were some capital expenditures coming out of.
Sure.
And what's the nature of those?
Yeah. Traditionally, I, I think what's taken place in the past, there's been a little bit of, I, I would say, emergency funding that would come out of the operational funds. We are moving that, and those capital expenditures are relatively large in nature. I mean, it could be anywhere between $5,000 and $15,000, somewhere in that neighborhood. It's not tremendously large, but enough to be able to take care of some sort of issue. We have our, in our bond funds, we have interest that we've created through just the funds being there. And, and so, we want to move, or move, move those emergencies that could or could not take place and move them out of the operational funds and move them into the bond fund, our bond interest funds.
Oh, so we're not budgeting for those every year?
That's right. Well, while we're budgeting.
Consider it more contingency.
That's a good, good question. We are, we were budgeting every year for them, and we may or may not use them. That's the thing. So, that if we, we use the bond funds, then when, we can actually just allocate them as we need them as opposed to trying to budget them on an, on an annual basis.
Okay. I understand.
Yep.
And let's see. I noticed Dr. Senti was kicking in 80K. Is that?
[laughing]
I, I trust your successor will not be.
We looked at the actuals that have actually been spent in the supernet's budget as to what's been budgeted, and it was way more than I can imagine that it would need to be in the future.
Okay.
Yeah. That's correct.
And I noticed purchasing department's kicking in two grand, so thank you, Eric. I didn't have any other financial questions. Anybody else?
Not financial.
Okay.
I just want to show our gratitude to Bonnie and her leadership team, the staff and faculty who basically have prepared such an outstanding, comprehensive approach to the kindergarten issue. It is very outstanding in every way. When you look at the national trend, there's no question that Parkway needs to go this direction. But you went the extended posture of giving us all the details, the research. I'm particularly excited about the staff development component, because that's the component that's going to make a difference for the children. And we're really pleased to have you make this presentation, and we're excited about the future for Parkway kindergarten children.
And as members of this steering committee for Project Parkway, Dr. Sortino and I are very excited to see this come forward. This is our first big initiative coming out of that, and we're very excited about that.
Yeah. And I have to say, I mean, when, when it came up, it seemed like the, the, it was so aggressive to try and get this done by next year. I was a little skeptical, but you guys have really stepped up and put together a really comprehensive plan. And that kind of leads to my question. I mean, you're going to have to do all the staff development to get everybody up to full-day kindergarten, curriculum development, all that sort of thing, plus all the new hires to fill it out. Does that, do you see any problems there? Or do you think that's going to be? I guess I'm talking to you, Liz.
So, the development plan, we have a, what we're envisioning, the, the dates for the kindergarten institute are the last, the last week of July, which is a week before new teacher orientation. So, we're hoping that our hiring process will be such that we'll have those new teachers in place, ready to go for the kindergarten institute at the end of July, set there intentionally. Then we also have new teacher orientation to bring in those new people as well. And we're not sure if the 16 people will be all new teachers, and they might be teachers who've moved into that position in Parkway. So, we feel really confident that we'll be able to move this forward. Does that answer the question?
Yeah. No, absolutely.
Don't go anywhere, Liz.
[laughing]
And, and Lisa, if you'd like to join her. And I guess I'm, I'm looking at the, the implementation plan, and, and obviously, there's, there's aspects of curriculum and, and professional development in play here. And, and Lisa, you mentioned some longitudinal curriculum development, and I'm certainly, are, are we tearing Kathy's?
What?
Cycle apart? Is that the curriculum evaluation cycle?
Okay.
That's progress. So, I guess my, my questions focus on, I guess, first, the, and, and I understand you're not all curriculum and assessment, but you're standing here and you are the presenter, so. And you use the word longitudinal, so.
Yes.
I think that makes you fair game. We, we've been looking at the kindergarten curriculum and, and talking about it in, you know, developmentally appropriate, and I think that addresses a lot of the, some of the concerns we've heard go to social, emotional, well, are the children ready? And I think that's something that maybe hasn't been explicitly addressed by the curriculum in, in previous iterations. What, what do you anticipate that's going to look like?
You know, I really anticipate that as the teachers come together and work this summer, and part of that will be during the three-day institute, that that will be part of what they help us develop. It's looking at the alignment between the Missouri preschool standards and the kindergarten GLEs.
Ding 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 ding.
Leaning into the first grade GLEs and the standards, and what is our alignment there? And that's what's a part of the framework around intervention. So, if we need to provide additional support for social or emotional needs of children or to accelerate for children who are ready for acceleration, that all of that will be a part of that. I would anticipate that the kindergarten teachers may be able to develop some type of checklist or observation form that would have key indicators around social, emotional development, because that is a key piece. Part of achieving our mission is for children to be able to take risks and try new things. And they need time for that, and a lot of that stands on the shoulders of their social, emotional development to where they're willing to take risks. So, I would anticipate that some checklist and monitoring kinds of forms would come from the teachers with that, based on the work that the, that they've been reading and studying through the task force and the kindergarten study committee.
And then the, the teacher with, with differentiated instruction implementing those kind of checklists, I think goes a lot toward bridging the gap between a half-day and a full-day. Is that?
Absolutely. And I also think part of looking at the sample calendars. You know, at the beginning of the year, we may certainly have guidelines for our rest time. But by the middle of the year, most of our kindergarteners no longer need that. So, that would come out of our instructional minutes. However, if we have a child who still needs that in January, that's where the differentiation would come in on that, that part of the development. As well as looking at the academic, our children who come in already reading, what do we need to do within the first few weeks of school to accelerate them? So, that's really that collaboration time with the teachers. And we need a wide range of assessment tools that we can use that will give us the correct information so that we know where to differentiate in what area.
And so, can we anticipate quadruple comm arts periods in kindergarten?
Well, of course. [laughing] We'll be reading to our dolls in the playtime. We'll be reading our cookbooks in the house area. And then we'll have a reading workshop.
Now I started it.
You did.
Dr. Blackmore?
Yes. Let me add in the middle to say about that curriculum cycle that we're going to do, just as a time to for our primary curriculum. So, it's not, we're not just looking at kindergarten as these kindergarteners move to first and second. So, think pre-K two. What does an integrated curriculum look like? So, that right now, I think we're thinking, and we have developed curriculum, so there's math, there's social studies, there's science. And how do we do better with the time we have and integrate for our young learners? Because that's truly how they learn. So, that will be a change you'll be getting to see in kindergarten, then to first, then to second.
Just as long as we don't have to wait five years for the last year to drop. Thank you very much. And I think that addressed all my concerns on that front. Anybody else?
Liz, anybody?
You go first.
All right. We'll just go online here. So, Liz and, and Lisa, I was just thinking, as, as we get the information out, there were at least three moms tonight that expressed some concerns, and you've probably heard from other moms and maybe some fathers. But do you have any thoughts about addressing all of something, you know, like, you know, I hadn't heard the one where maybe my child won't be able to go to the school that I can walk to, things like that, or that they lose focus, not enough playtime and stuff like that? Will that kind of information come out to them so they have a clear understanding? Plus, I don't think many of them may even understood that they have a choice.
Yeah, I think that was important, that I, that I'm glad that Dee brought that up about the choice is definitely there, and Dr. Senti, important, yeah.
Well, and this does involve kids moving from one attendance area to the other in any case.
Oh, that's great. And then I would, I'm, I'm guessing, because we haven't gotten this far, well, in the implementation plan, that we would have really great public relations through working with Paul and the group to get information out to parents about what this means to them. So, that's going to be pretty quick, though, because I believe kindergarten registration starts February 17. And guys, anything to add to that from the?
We are going to get information out, yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay.
Don't go anywhere.
Oh, before you guys sit down, Lisa, I think this one's for you. How is the early intervention model going to change?
You know, that's one of the things that Dr. Maxi and Kathy and Steve Colombo, John Barrow, and I have been talking about. The current funding source for EIS will not be available at the close of the school year is our understanding through the IDEA money. So, we are looking at other funding sources to fund an early intervention services, and we are looking at Title I funds at this point. And we think we will have the money to do that. We might have to change the structure of it a little bit in some buildings based on space. So, once we know whether or not we're going forward with full-day kindergarten, Dr. Maxi and I will have a meeting with all of the principals of buildings that receive Title I funds and explore the possibilities of what that could look like for next year.
Are we currently still in our, in our pilot schools on that program?
We are in the original, well, we are in six schools. We've changed a couple of locations for various purposes. And that's, we've been locked to that based on the amount of funding we received from special school district through our IDEA funds.
And I know it's just been a few years, but is that program proving to be successful?
Our program evaluation that Nathan has helped us complete every year shows that the children in EIS start below their peers and on many of our assessments, finish above, finish the kindergarten year above their peers on the assessments that we are using. We are also finding that most of the children who participate in EIS are not picked up for first round of reading recovery in first grade, and very few are picked up for reading recovery at all. Our very first children who were in EIS are in third grade this year, so we are anxiously awaiting to see their MAPS scores this summer.
Thanks. So are we.
Will there be some type of readiness assessment at the beginning of the year to determine where each child is so their program could be designed for their particular needs?
Oops. We are going to continue with our screening that we do for all children at the beginning of the year or in the summer prior to the year starting. We also administer the DOMINEE in the middle of the year, and we are also going to look at some of the screening subtests or sub-units that we use with the EIS program. So, we're, we're going to relook at some aspects to see what we might add to what we already do. We also are going to develop a survey form for parents, not a survey, but an information form for parents. We want to kind of unify that across the district for all schools. Many schools have a form, but we're going to develop one that's uniform so that we can use that data also in regard to looking at our children longitudinally.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. All right. With that, may I have a motion in a second that the Board of Education approved the implementation of full-day kindergarten, tuition-free for all children who wish it, beginning with the 2011-2012 school year.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Congratulations.
[applause]
Thank.
Not that often, but can school board get a standing ovation?
[laughing]
Well, it is, it is school board appreciation weekend.
Yes.
And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess and anyone who doesn't. Thank.
Not that often, but can school board get a standing ovation?
It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess, and anyone who doesn't... Thank. Thank. It is School Board Appreciation Week.
How did those meetings, you say you've had a few meetings already with the teachers in some of the schools? How do those seem to go as you present them? How are they responding?
Well, we went out last week for the first time. The one at West High was the day after school started back. Those weren't highly attended. But at Central Middle School and Hannah Woods, and we've, those were, had great attendance, and the feedback has been, it's been good. Some of the questions that have arisen, and they might have, the development area title that we worked so hard on, some great questions that came out of that is like, could I be developing forever? Is, I thought that was a great question. And then all of us are developing. So maybe we need, when we go back to our group meets at the end of January, we'll be taking those questions back because we, we're probably going to have to tweak that a little bit. And they think, and I think you guys probably noticed it right now, the document is really big, and it's supposed to be easier for administrators to use, not harder. So we will take that document, and we're going to streamline it, so each of the domains that are now, like, one of them is on three pages, we'll get those down to one page per domain. Anything else to add, guys?
I assume that there is more than just classroom observations to gather data. So what are all the aspects that a principal would be looking at, looking for in terms of a teacher's performance?
What we're looking at, there's several different things. We haven't had an electronic portfolio in Parkway before for our teachers, and some of the items that you're talking about, a principal wouldn't see simply by walking into someone's classroom. So we're hoping with, with the, in conjunction with like the evaluation piece being online, that you can actually do electronic portfolios. So for example, under planning and preparation for learning, I might have done some fabulous lesson planning that if Sam came into my classroom, he would not be able to see me doing that. So I can put that into my electronic portfolio, and it sends an automatic message to my administrator saying Liz has updated her portfolio. So the principals can use those electronic pieces to bring that in as one way to look at teachers' work besides just the classroom observation.
That's great.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah, what about the amount of sitting conference, meet and greet, so to speak, the principal and the teacher? You know, having done this in the past, it seems like it's, you know, we do it one time and it's over with. Could we consider maybe having more times that there would be conferences to collaborate other than just once a year? Could that be guaranteed or not?
Guys want to take this one?
Well, I think part of this is for ongoing communication and feedback to teachers. I think that supports a very strong model, and we want to see best practices in the classroom. So the only way that we're going to see that is for teachers to get that immediate and ongoing feedback.
The other thing, too, is we have really been focused on developing the model that we're going to use, and we have not had lengthy discussions about the process and what it will look like and who all will be involved. So that's really going to become our focus once we get our streamlining done, which should be pretty soon. So we're going to be having all kinds of discussions about that.
Good. I guess another concern is just the number of faculty members each administrator has to evaluate. And that, that's kind of really a difficult situation when you have 25 teachers to evaluate throughout the year, and you're considering a comprehensive evaluation that includes as much collaboration as possible, feedback as possible.
Yeah, we're hoping that working with the administrators on our team as well as the administrative development, that we'll be able to figure out a way to make that not seem unmanageable. The author of Rethinking Teacher Supervision and Evaluation in Schools, Kim Marshall, we contacted him with our evaluation model. I figured we were using his as a model, and he could say no if he didn't want to respond, but he did. We're probably, he'll be coming in to do the development with the, with our administrators, and he does a lot of what you're talking about with his, he's a former principal who did all of this evaluation, and I think he's going to really be able to give us some great direction on how to do the what part of the evaluation. And it's interesting, you guys, the teachers at Central, Middle, and at Hannah Woods, the one thing that they really wanted was more observations of their work than, once you're tenured, you get observed maybe once every four years, and they really felt like they needed more than that. And you can't, they felt like you can't get better if you don't have that support. So we're hoping we can bring in those, that thinking into how this model works. And we know, we know it takes more time, but if we have shorter spots, instead of going in and sitting for 90 minutes, we think we can make that work for both the teachers and the administrators. So it's a good process.
Well, that's really critical. The other thing, will, at the end of the process, will there be a growth plan? Will each teacher have a growth plan?
Yes, and that's, we're really going to tie in to the, and that's what we're going to be planning in the 2011, 2012, what year is this, 2011? Next year. We're going to align the development plan with the evaluation model. And we're hoping then that we can get all of the stars to be kind of aligned with, here's where you're working on with the principal. The way this model is set up, it's not just about one lesson plan, which is kind of what we do right now, it's about the domains. And so I might need some assistance on monitoring, assessment, and feedback, because I just don't really do formative assessments. So I would work with my principal to kind of collaborate on what kind of development I might need to do that, and then I might say, hey, you know, send Sam an email saying, I'm going to be doing this assessment, if you have time, could you come in and look at that? So we're kind of, we want it to really be collaborative and to really help people grow in those areas. Does that help?
Thank you, yeah.
Yep, okay.
Dee?
First of all, I'm stunned by your progress. This is great. You've really worked hard. And not to be the voice of doom and gloom here, but I have read and heard some of our legislators talking about performance-based teachers evaluations, et cetera, et cetera. We don't know, of course, what Jeff Cuddy's going to do. Is this going to be adaptable? I, you probably can't even answer this question, but is someone at least watching that to know? I know we probably have two examples of people who watch it daily, but, right here, but...
It looks like the trends, Diana Sturt checked into this for us, and the trends right now appear to be, for legislative coming up, are to, wait, I got to think, they are looking at getting rid of tenure is out there on the table, and the other one was getting rid of merit pay. So it's intriguing that those are both on the legislative agenda.
Well, I also read something about evaluations of teachers, and I don't know if it's just someone who said something or that there's actual legislation that's been proposed, but...
I think that's connected to the idea of the states who are getting the money for Race to the Top. Some of those states have that directly tied in.
But I think there's a Missouri legislator who is working on moving this forward.
So we're trying to watch those things as they come out.
I would just hate for you guys to go through all this, and then the state comes down and say, nope, you got to do it this way.
Yeah.
So, because I think this is a great approach.
Oh, yeah, tell them, yeah.
And that is one of the models that we've been working with and looking at as we've gone through the process. So we, we too would hate for that to happen. But we feel pretty good about where we are now. So I guess part of that's just going to be timing and waiting to see.
So I guess we're all aware of it, and we can be the squeaky wheel if we need to be, so.
Right. Just to put names with the legislation, absolutely Diana Sturt is watching, what I call the formal legislation, and Connie Paul is very involved now in going to meetings. Julie Collins back there, she's here too, just in case you have more questions, is looking at, the state is looking at the growth value-added model. So there are things happening not only at the state but the national level, and we have people watching. I think one of the criticisms of Zero to Thirty that I heard in the first meeting was that we didn't monitor that tool often enough. And as we have talked, the evaluation of the evaluation, and I know sometimes people get tired of that fluid document, but it, this committee, sorry, needs to stay around and keep watching every year so that it's not done in stone forever and ever, but that we can make adjustments as we go and as the committee deems are important, and as we keep an eye at the state level, too.
Right, thanks.
But we're watching.
Dr. Centi? Go ahead.
Have you done the math on this in terms of the number of evaluators and the number of people who are evaluated? Just to see that any more frequent observations is really important, but what that really means if you divide the, I'm worried that no matter what the system, that there may not be enough administrators to do the observations. So have you thought at all about peer observations? Not peer evaluations, peer observations?
So yes, we've had some discussions, but they've been a little more brief, and that's where we're going to be headed in this next couple months, because that's where we're going to really develop the process and what it'll look like. So I'm sure some of those are going to come into play, because when we talk about how many times you want to have an administrator in the classroom, we need to make those considerations. And what will be the best way to truly use this as a development model and to help teachers so that everybody grows and sees it as a growth model? So yeah, we're going to be talking about that a lot.
And I think that we brought up, the, they're looking at, we're currently looking at the job descriptions of our department chairs, our team leaders, our curriculum leaders at the middle school level, where those might be natural positions for peer observation to get tied in as long as there's enough time for them to do that. So we actually have that kind of in, which would make it easier to have peer observations in school.
Well, I'm familiar with a system where that's used, and those are valued very highly by the other teachers to have a peer observe you, as in some cases, they value that more than the administrator's observation.
Great, thanks.
Well, and I think to leverage off of that, we do have a mentoring, formal mentoring program in place, and we allocate district resources toward that end. And that seems to me, in your discussions, as far as an efficient system, certainly we might want to fold that into the overall process. And also the, you mentioned the ongoing need for, and I think we look at mentoring as basically until you're tenured, and then you don't need a mentor anymore. Certainly, my experience from, from the Navy was you absolutely need a mentor every step of the way. And in fact, the military brings back retired flag officers to be the mentors of flag officers in combat theaters. So I think maybe the, look at the mentoring program more than the first three, four, or five years. And that also, I think with your domains, I think you're going to identify the fours within those domains, and those look like natural candidates for, and probably better able to evaluate the classroom teacher than, with all due respect, any of our administrators, who, many of them have gotten onto the administrator track and don't have that level of expertise and refinement. So I think there's, certainly we ought to try to wrap that into the whole thing.
I feel like I should be taking notes. So I'm sitting here trying to, because those are great suggestions for us to take back to the group, we really appreciate that.
Any other questions, Tom?
Talk a little bit more about the quality of the whole process, and, you know, I think there's some research out there that basically tells administrators how they can get a very good and sometimes a quick look at the quality of what is happening in the classroom, as well as the teacher's professional style throughout the school. That could make it more efficient and more practical, because I think sometimes these become so comprehensive, but they're not practical in administering. So that's the thing I would hope you, that you look at.
When you're developing a rubric, did you look at external sources, do any evaluation as far as like, you know, because it would seem that there would be some standards out there that they could draw upon, and we talked about state requirements and that sort of thing.
Yes, we used several different books by authors who are doing this right now, and Jawanda has them. We used Marshall's book, and there's other, yeah. Marshall's book has rubrics that have been, he's been using in his classrooms that are being implemented across the country. So we looked at the model that they have there, as well as the descriptors that went under their domains. And then Charlotte Danielson's work, Enhancing Professional Practice is another one that we use. Her model has been implemented in the Rockwood School District, I know for sure, and other districts around the area are using Danielson's work. Marshall, Danielson came out in about 2006. Marshall's work just as hot off the press. This one came out right when we started our work. So we wanted to make sure we had what was kind of on the cutting edge. If we're going to get a new model, we want to be sort of on the cutting edge of that versus going back. So Marshall had taken the work of Danielson and other evaluations that are out there and kind of compiled them into this work. So we've used that. We've looked at evaluation models from across the state, from across the country, the national standards that are out there, the state standards that we have, pretty much any model that we have, we've brought in, we helped the lumberjacks by bringing in so many copies for our team to look at, so they could see what was the current best practice that are out there for evaluation.
Great, thanks.
Yeah.
Sam?
The only other thing I wanted to bring up is self-evaluation. You know, and I really applaud you for all that you're doing. I mean, you're doing a very comprehensive study of the research and the practicality of all this, but, you know, I think building in a self-evaluation process, that the teacher basically sits down with the principal and talks about what they're doing, how they're doing, or where they think they're doing a good job or not doing a good job, because in the end, that's what it's all about. You know, the teacher has to feel that I'm doing the very best job for my students within the best practices and what's appropriate to their individual needs. So I think the self-evaluation piece, and probably some of the research in the books indicates that self-evaluation is an important part of the process.
And one of our, I think the packet that I sent to you all included an idea for how you could do that self-evaluation before you went and met with your principal on the work, which is, it's a great idea, and I'm hoping that people will embrace that. I know another one is client survey. How do we bring that in to the process so we don't over-survey the teachers' clients? Because one student has seven that they would, you know, have to possibly do. We've been looking at those kind of things as well.
Great. Beth?
Liz, when I looked at this, I spent a long time this morning going over your rubric and your standards, I don't think you call them, your domains.
Domains, yeah.
And it reminded me very much of the standard-based grading model that they're using here at Central Middle, the summative side. Did you, was that, was that part of your thinking?
The whole idea of this, having standards that you worked towards part of it, because what, one of the things we saw coming back from the data that Project Parkway brought in was that teachers felt like, if I evaluated you one year, and then, Beth, you evaluated somebody that's the same teacher the next year, how we evaluated people depended on our, what we thought about teaching. And so we really, that standards idea really helps it be more objective and more fair. And so, yeah, that whole standards idea came into play with this model.
Okay. Anything else? Well, certainly want to extend our continuing thanks to President Bozeman and Vice President Pepper and everybody else involved on the committees. I've observed some of your work at some of the meetings over the last year, and I just, it's very encouraging to see the right people working on the right problem. So, thank you. All right.
Thank you very much.
Now we turned your report into a work session, will we?
Yeah. You guys, thank you very much. And once again, I'd like to thank our team who came tonight for this. Yay!
And with that, we'll move on to our actual work session, Project Parkway preliminary draft of the five-year strategic plan. Call on Dr. Tim Hudson, Coordinator of Mathematics and Steering Committee Facilitator. I feel like there ought to be some theme music here.
Transition. Now a word from our sponsor.
I think it'd be pretty compatible. If they're looking at all those practices, it should be pretty close, I would think.
You want to know how to empty a room, too.
That he hasn't even started something.
It's true, I didn't say anything. It's not on me, it's good.
You have to really worry if board members start leaving.
Yeah, that's true. Please, stick with me. Well, good evening, President Major, Vice President Jacob, members of the board, Dr. Centi. I'm pleased to be here tonight, and it's a really exciting time here in Parkway, as you well know. We have an extraordinary mission, which will require a very strategic plan, and I'm confident that the plan that we finalize in May will be implemented well over the next five years, thanks to the work of Project Parkway that's led up to this, and we'll continue on that work, that very hard work, I should say. So without further ado, two components to my presentation this evening and the work session. First, just to real quickly present to you that you are... So without further ado, two components to my presentation this evening and the work session. First, just to real quickly present to you that you were also sent the final draft of the district commitments, that additional component we added to the mission, vision, learning principles, and commitments. We did finalize that with the steering committee in December and are submitting that to you for approval. And then also to share with you the initial draft of the 2011-16 goals for feedback and input prior to our steering committee meeting next week. This is the final draft of the commitments, and you have that in your documentation. I've highlighted the changes that we made since the previous draft in red, and those changes came about through steering committee conversations, feedback from the community online and in other venues. Even that very first one was from a student at a town hall meeting. We used to have it say, "Recognize the uniqueness of students," and they suggested "value" was a much more appropriate word, and we concurred wholeheartedly. So that was a good piece. We, also the second part on the agenda is to add that to policy AD dot BP, and that would have the mission, vision, learning principles, commitments in it, which would also allow us to remove those other two policies, which are a bit redundant with our mission, vision, and learning principles. They were statements of philosophy and other things like that. So that is the first piece. The second piece, the key questions, we've presented these before, shared them in December. These are our essential questions for the work of Project Parkway and moving Parkway forward for the next five years and into the future. How will we know when we can say, "Mission accomplished," for the outstanding mission that we've crafted? And how will our district goals and strategic plan for 2011-16 accomplish our mission? What I'm going to present tonight is really following out what our mission implies. It is the logical outworking and implications, what we are obligated to and what we should be doing in light of our mission for the next five years. I shared this quote last time I spoke with you in December. "The first job of leaders in a nonprofit institution is to turn the organization's mission statement into specifics." And that's what part of this work is tonight, to really define, what do we mean by curious learning? How are we going to monitor that? What is a capable learner? How are we going to measure these things? A few other quotes from the presentation last time. Stephen Covey, you know, "We can be very busy without being effective. We can lose sight of our long-term mission in the day-to-day business of school." And Stephen Covey, "If the latter's leaning in the wrong direction, all the work that we do just gets us to the wrong place faster, so we have to begin with the end in mind. Given our mission, what do we need to do for the next five years?" The alignment piece, these were slides that Kathy shared last time. We need to make sure everyone knows the priorities and expectations, how success is defined, how it will be measured, and when. And then that allows us to know what is and is not working. These are key considerations we have to be thinking through. From good to great, we're facing a lot of environmental challenges that all school districts are facing, but in light of that, we have an outstanding mission. And the greatness that Parkway has had and will continue to have is not a function of circumstance. It's largely a matter of conscious choice and discipline. And so this first draft of the goals for the strategic plan that I'm sharing with you from the steering committee tonight really is this conscious choice and discipline to follow through and accomplish our mission. We begin with the end in mind, our mission. We want a five-year plan that can be implemented. We've talked a lot about the practicalities of evaluation and different implementation things. And certainly in our five-year strategic plan, that's something we have to balance, what can actually be done and what might require new types of thinking, new ways of thinking to accomplish our mission. The plan will not go on the shelf. The Project Parkway structure that we've established has done a lot of great work since its inception a couple of years back, and it's a solid structure that's really working well for our district. So the steering committee and goal committees will monitor the decisions, the goals and the strategic plan for the next five years. And I'm pleased with the structures we have in place, and I like, at the same time, start thinking about 2016 to 2021. It's 2011 just now, so that's 10 years from now. Wow. All right, my son will have his driver's license. So the planning stages from schooling by design, which is sort of our blueprint for this work, tonight what I'm sharing with you are these first two pieces. Framing and referring to measurable goals based on a vision, principles of learning, and all appropriate standards. And then two, what are the credible evidence, what's the credible evidence and indicators of success for judging all of our progress? That's kind of what I'm sharing with you tonight. Then next week, when the steering committee meets again, we will begin to draft that plan. What are the strategies and action steps to help us get to those goals, and that'll be measured in those ways? Couple of quotes from schooling by design that I think are fairly appropriate. "The first stage in the design process calls for clarity about priorities expressed as achievements." And that really is what I'm sharing with you tonight and what you were sent previously. "Effective reformers take time to clarify not just their goals, but also the needed assessment evidence and initial data before they generate a detailed action plan." Dee and Sam, as you know, I mean, we've thought about these things a whole lot and wrestled with them. It's very difficult work to really specify those desired results, but we want to make sure the latter is pointed in the correct direction before we start deciding what strategies will help us get there. "Contemporary school reform efforts typically focus too much on various means, structures, schedules, programs, PD, instructional practices. Certainly such reforms serve as the fuel for the school improvement engine, but they must not be mistaken as the destination, which is improved learning." We've talked a lot about we need to measure outcomes, not our offerings. So our five-year strategic plan, the draft structure that the steering committee has worked out and generated and had reviewed by Grant Wiggins, is sort of two things. We're going to measure our mission, accomplishing our mission, the outcomes, which is our mission-related student performance goals. And then we want to honor those commitments that we've established, the offerings, the things that we do as adults, the organizational goals. So the draft structure we have is those two pieces. A key point to note is that all of our mission indicators and commitments are important and must be and will be monitored. So we'll be monitoring everything in our mission, vision, and commitments. But for the next five years, only a few things are our priorities. Case in point, one of our vision bullets, we want students to be articulate speakers and effective listeners. That is something we're going to be monitoring and be paying close attention to. But based on our knowledge of student performance, the work of Project Parkway, that particular vision bullet really hasn't come up as a severe area of deficit in Parkway. We're doing very well on that. So for the next five years, we'll monitor it, but we won't emphasize it with specific strategies unless we, over the next five years, come to learn that that is becoming an issue that we need to address. So in those two pieces, accomplish mission and honor commitments, these are the three sort of overarching goals, the framework for what we're going to be measuring. Our mission lives right within the sort of goal statements themselves. We want capable learners who transfer their prior learning, curious learners who understand and respond, I abbreviated it, to the challenges of our changing world, and confident learners who are increasingly self-directed. So our key mission and vision bullets are in our goals for the next five years, this draft. And then the commitments that have really risen up through the steering committee and Project Parkway work that we need to emphasize are the strong professional communities, exceptional staff members, and responsibly and efficiently allocating resources. And as you well know, I mean, I think most of the things that we've discussed and had presentations, have really fallen in these three categories. Allocation of resources, responsibly using space, buildings, full-day kindergarten, all of these things fall into. The teacher evaluation, exceptional staff members, it's all right there, it's the work that we're doing. So within these brochure-level goals, here's another great quote, it's also very appropriate. "Abstract or broad goals come to life when we agree on the observable indicators we hope to see or the quantifiable measures that will enable us to gauge success." So to the point we've always had, and many members in our community have had, curious learners, how can you measure curiosity? How can you cause curiosity? These sorts of questions. Well, the abstract goals come to life when we agree on how we're going to measure it. We have a word for curiosity. I use this as an example because it's probably the least understood adjective in our mission. Right adjective? Yeah. Yes. It's late for grammar, anybody? Never too late for grammar, I should say.
Let's diagram it.
It's always the right time.
Shall we?
You know, we have a word for curious because it's something we can detect. We can measure it, we can observe it. And so to what degree and how are we going to do that? So that's what this next piece is about. So for accomplishing mission, that very first goal, capable learners who transfer. And we have a vision bullet that really defines that well, that defines that well. And what we're proposing is that we will monitor our Parkway curriculum, our Missouri exams, local, state, national exams, ACT, AP, graduation, and graduate surveys, that those will be the measurable components that will allow us to gauge how capable our learners are. Because those measurable objectives are things that our community pretty well understands, and we have some compelling data for. The second piece, curious learners who understand and respond, we have a vision bullet about problem solving associated with that. And this was a tough one to brainstorm, to be quite honest. How will we measure this? And some thoughts that we had was through our coursework, how often are our students engaged in relevant global problem solving? We have global there, but I mean, it could just as easily be community. Inquiry, how well are our students asking questions and investigating and things like that? And then we've had some conversations about creativity and a component of creativity, which is divergent thinking. We, I think one of the parents mentioned, you know, in the community statement, that in China, yeah, they legitimately are wanting more creative people. Our country does have a lot of the creative capital in the world, and we want to maintain that. And there's, you know, a lot to be thought about, about how creative our kids are when they are in kindergarten as opposed to when they're graduating high school. So we really want to, if it's important to us, we need to monitor it. We don't really have any internal data on that, most school districts don't. And I've sort of joked with the steering committee that there probably aren't many districts in the country or around the world who are currently trying to figure out how to measure their students' curiosity, which is, I think, a great place for us to be in as far as being leaders in education. Thirdly, confident learners who are self-directed, this one a little more, better understood by everyone. We've associated that with personal, social, and civic responsibility, and we're going to be measuring this through, we propose to measure this through surveys of parents, students, faculty, surveys about emotionally safe climates, service projects, personal health plans for students, civic responsibility, and how well the students are self-monitoring their own goals. So those are some of the measurable things we've come up with on the steering committee for monitoring how confident our learners are and how self-directed they are. Until and unless we assess for mission-based goals and in-depth student understanding, school won't change much. Educators make a grave error when they confuse the state's audit function with the organization's need for more direct, powerful, and credible measures of its purposes. We must design local assessment systems that measure what matter most, the straight-out-of-schooling by design. And I really appreciated that in the kindergarten presentation, Lisa Greenstein pointed out the circles about, you know, we have the Missouri, National, State, and Parkway at the edges. And that's a key piece, to remember that, you know, the MAP test and the state accountability structures, they're to audit our practices. In the same way, the analogy that's drawn in schooling by design is about how there are state and local building codes for buildings, that our new science wing at Central High, that meets all of the state's codes. When they audit that building, they say, "Yeah, this is up to code." But yet, none of us would say that's not distinct and a creative building that really serves our students and community well and is representative of the kind of facility we want. So in the same way, we want to make sure that when the state audits our practices with the MAP test, that's not the whole thing. We have a mission that is much broader than that, and that's why you saw all of those different bullets, a lot of different ways to measure it. And to the, you know, curious learner piece, we have to design some local assessment systems that measure that piece, as it is part of our mission. The second piece, honoring commitments, the strong professional communities. We have discussed measurable objectives for surveys of staff, how those would turn out, implementation of the work of professional communities, and personal growth plans for staff. For the exceptional staff piece, teacher effectiveness, talking about the model, talking about the quality of feedback that staff get, that was all the previous conversation. And then the representation of our staff, of our community, which was something that's come up through Project Parkway. Then third, efficiently allocating resources, measurable objectives for the enrollment question, making sure we have balanced enrollments, no overcrowding, ensuring we are financially accountable and have good financial practices, that we allocate time and personnel effectively, and then some of the capital improvements that we do, because it is a long-range kind of plan to wrap up the capital improvements we've committed to, and then looking ahead to future ones. So all that said, the bullets don't look all that nice, but I kind of developed a graphic just for the steering committee to consider, how would this look at sort of a brochure level? And Paul Tandy gave the approval to share something like this, with the caveat that in no way does this represent anything more than Tim Hudson learning a little bit about Microsoft Publisher, to make it more palatable than a boring bulleted list. And it works out all right for a not-at-all expert graphic designer, but enough about that. This would be how we could frame it in a brochure-type level, that we have the three pieces there, capable, curious, confident, as well as the measurable indicators, kind of a snapshot, what our purpose is, is to accomplish the mission. And then similarly, what are we promising to do? We're going to honor our commitments. And so it's just a graphical way, because the bulleted slides didn't look terribly exciting. Maybe this doesn't look exciting to you, I don't know. The timeline for the rest of our work. Next week, where we're going to, there in red, add the strategies, action steps, and timelines, key thing being timelines. You know, anything, for example, that we assess related to curious learning, will probably take maybe a year or two to even learn enough to know what to do. So it's a five-year plan, and we wouldn't expect to be doing all of those things instantly. That's a key piece. We will share the plan on February 2nd with all principals, directors, managers, and coordinators, and also distribute it to all staff. Then on the 7th, we have a Project Parkway meeting in the evening, and also on March 14th, we have our last steering committee meeting on March, I'm sorry, March 16th, yeah, where we'll incorporate the feedback we've gotten, since it was shared on February 2nd, and develop the final five-year plan, which we will share with the board on April 13th, the first reading, and seeking approval on May 4th with a town hall thrown in there. So three questions that I sent to the board, sort of from the steering committee, what the things that we need. Other than those six goals that are the initial draft priorities, are there other vision or commitment indicators the board believes should be areas of focus for the next five years? Are there any of the six goals that the board would not think are priority, immediate needs? And then what feedback and input do you have for any of those measurable objectives, the bullets? As we measure, you know, we make commitments to measure AP or ACT-type objectives. So there's the three questions, there's the presentation, and I will hand it over to you.
Mrs. Boglum?
Dr. Hudson, I think you and Dr. Wiggins have been very busy, because this doesn't look like what we left you with at the end of the last steering committee meeting. I'm very impressed how this all fell into place. I also keep hearing, of course, measurement, and are we going to have to clone Julie Collins and Nathan Tyson?
Yeah, that's already underway.
I don't know how else we're gonna.
That's one of the challenges of the ever-changing world that they're working on in the science wing over there.
Okay, that would be great.
It's a whole project.
Sixth-grade science project.
Yeah, sixth grade. No, you don't want sixth graders cloning, I don't think. Maybe.
The one thing I wanted to bring up, and maybe board members can give input on this, we talked about it a little bit in the steering committee, and now I've got to find it, about the efficient, responsibly and efficiently allocate resources. There was some discussion, and I think it was mainly from me, I'll admit it, about maybe broadening this to not, to include all resources, energy we use, et cetera. So I don't know if other board members feel that needs to be a priority.
Well, it does say including.
It does, but there's nothing here that focuses on that. It's just a broad... I mean, I know a lot of our kids work hard at that, our teachers work hard at that. Do we need to include it in here? I don't know.
I mean, I would think that would be a worthy goal, is to include something about sustainability and all resources, as far as that goes.
Yeah, we can discuss that at the steering committee meeting, for sure. I mean, that's sort of the tricky piece with that one in particular, is if we, you know, if we just say responsibly and efficiently allocate resources, we could just leave it at that. We threw in the including ones just to be a little more specific, especially in relation to some of the current things that we're discussing. But yeah, we definitely want to.
But how do we measure it?
Right.
And what do we measure? I guess is the question.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know, it just seems like it's left out, but I don't know how we would include it.
Are you thinking as one of the bullets?
The bullets?
Yeah, okay. Like after, like along with capital improvements and the, is that what you're thinking? Yeah.
We can talk about that, just sitting and thinking about it, if we talked about the one about kids' problem solving, wouldn't that be a wonderful task for some of our students to figure out?
It would.
How would we evaluate what we recycle? So, bringing a need in the district and giving it to our students. But I think that's something we can talk about. How will we know what program and other issues?
And maybe that's something at the school level they decide. I don't know.
In my perspective, it's a little...
But it's just not here, and...
I'm going to forward you, that's an email I got today from Mary, about how the kids at Craig have sort of done a lot of that. How much are we recycling work by school? Just here.
Kind of tie a couple of the goals.
And the other thing I remember discussing, I don't remember a lot, but I remember this, because our current goals state about a safe environment for kids, not just emotional, which is in here, but a physical environment. Do we need to include that somewhere? I mean, for years, we've had that. Or is it implicated somewhere else here, and I'm just not seeing it?
It is something we'll be monitoring as one of our commitments to ensuring kids have safe schools. So, yeah, that's something we can...
But you said you're going to monitor their emotional, where is it? I can't find it. Emotionally safe, that they are in emotionally safe environments, but do we need to add physically safe?
Possibly, yeah.
Well, can't be physically safe.
Yes. That's probably our first priority.
Right, yeah.
And physically and a cyber-safe environment.
Right.
And that's where, you know, this particular, that particular one is because of, you know, the work that's been done with the Project Parkway Task Force, the climate, the bullying things. It is top radar, whereas, you know, our students are very safe in our schools. And so, we are definitely committed to that. And to what degree does a measurable objective in our five-year plan need to reflect that? Possibly does, yeah.
Maybe just add, all students will report that they are in emotionally and physically safe environments, or something like that.
Yeah.
I don't know. You see what I'm getting at?
Oh, sure.
I know it's late.
I think to leverage off your first point about the responsibly and efficiently allocate resources, I think if you read through that entire paragraph, it certainly, equity is implicit, but shouldn't equity be explicit? And with the understanding that equity doesn't mean equal, which may be, may have been a guiding principle in the past, but...
Yeah, I mean, we definitely want to allocate faculty and resources where there is need, for sure. And the implicit and explicit, that's been, that's the large challenge of, like, concise missions and concise plans, and who's the audience for a particular level of document. And the nice thing is, is with, with the internet, we can make anything sort of clickable for more information, so that maybe everything doesn't have to be explicit at the outset. But that's really the balance, is what might be obviously implied to me doesn't necessarily mean it's obviously implied to others. So, that's excellent feedback.
And then, I think off the second point, in your confident learners, talks a lot about the social-emotional, but I think a term that stuck with me from one of the town hall meetings when we had some students involved was that notion of reputational capital. And I think that's partially captured in this, but the, you know, the understanding and the article that I'm thinking back to kind of talked about the children who are, you know, six-year-olds now, when they're 25 and 30, that your reputation is going to be built in social networks and something that, literally incomprehensible to us, that some of our missteps as, well, I won't speak for all of us, some of Bruce's missteps when he was growing up, the notion that those might be available for public consumption is rather daunting, so...
Yeah, nothing leaves the internet, yeah.
And then, the kids don't see why that's relevant to them.
I think it's part and parcel of creating the individual we're thinking of, so... And then, the other part was, I think, early on, the ongoing monitoring. And I think you talked about a cast of characters who have that function. And it seemed to me that was somewhat limited cast, in that I think Dr. Wiggins talked early on about the ideal is the district where the bus driver can look at these goals and say, "Here's my job." And I think you can do that with some of these. But I think the entire community and getting to the communication piece, whatever our monitoring tool is, it ought to be broadly accessible. We talk about assessment literacy, and there may be multiple layers to this, but I think it ought to be accessible at the... Feedback from kindergartners, anyone?
Yeah.
This might be a good time to jump in and link a project that you may have limited awareness at this point, which is data dashboarding. And we're working on this currently with assessment data and attendance data and those kinds of classroom data that we want teachers to be able, and administrators to be able to access. You know, when they would log in, this dashboard would appear. Now, apply that concept to the district strategic plan, which is basically what we're talking about tonight, so that the key indicators, also realizing that not every one of these things will become immediate, as Tim talked about, they'll be over the five-year time, certain priorities will emerge. So, those priorities would become dashboard items in front of and relevant to whoever the logger-inner might be, the staff member might be, as you talked about, what's relevant for transportation may appear for them, and so on. So, those are broad concepts right now. We're starting on a smaller basis with that, but next year, part of my goals will be to make sure that as a district, we have dashboarding for our strategic plan. And I know Dr. Hudson will continue to work with that. I just publicly solicited his help with that. Dr. Tyson's as well. There'll be a team, but we're excited about that and as a way to monitor.
Could you give us an example for, like, a fifth-grade teacher's dashboard?
Absolutely. We just started focus groups today. We have two starting points in terms of reports. One, attendance on a monthly basis. I wish I was showing it now, but it's really cool. But with the attendance, it's a gauge, and you can actually click on, if you have attendance below 93%, which would be the state area of concern, because we would not make AYP if we're below 93% for a particular subgroup. If you click on that red, you actually get the list of student names and also subgroups that they might belong to, so you can really be monitoring on an individual basis attendance. Also, formative assessment. Currently in our PAR system, we have formative assessment data in tabular form. It's there, people can find it, they can usually export it to Excel and do something else with it. But the data that we're supplying at this point is graphic. As you pull it up, it's visual, and it's already disaggregated for people. Again, with clickable links to be able to see student names attached as well. So, so much enhancement has taken place in a short amount of time, and we're getting focus group feedback on that currently, so that we can make that even better by the time we roll it out next year. But we'll start, it's funny, we've had two audiences so far. Elementary principals was our first group today, and they said, "Where can we see this now?" Because it's live data, and we want this now. So, Sharon Hennessy and her team are working to make that live even today, so...
Wow.
Just to connect initiatives, the stoneware project that you approved, this is where the data dashboards are going to come up, and it's not going to be 10 clicks to get to them, but what a priority. So, I think for all of us who have been around a while, it is changing our mental model about monitoring. Monitoring on our goals and what really is important doesn't have to be as difficult as we're thinking about it.
That's great.
And I wish Julie could pull, I mean, it is amazing what we're able to do, and it's our programmers and technology that are taking PARs and building these reports.
So, they're taking what's in PARs and abbreviating it?
When's the first meeting you think we maybe could have sort of a glimpse of that?
Next month would be hard. We could actually get it...
February, March?
If I could get to my email fast enough. No, we really, it is set close down. It's something, and they're looking at it and correcting it. And even for the common assessments, for instance, the one I saw, which was really neat, is the third grade common assessment. We've had three. So, the teacher gets her very own kiddo's common assessment, and she sees third grade in her building common assessments and then, third grade district-wise. Because you can always keep going, what's the right amount of growth? And so, imagine a five-year strategic plan that has the same kind of data dashboard, and what is really critical, and as much as I appreciate the additions and comments, if you try to measure everything, you don't measure anything well. So, we've got to keep looking at our data, even, you know, the physical environment, you know, it's not bubbling up, that isn't bubbled up. The bullying, the social-emotional health, which we don't know how to do a data dashboard on that. So, it's where is the energy and time? Because in the past, when we do climate surveys, we don't put kids' names on it, because we want to get accurate data. But if you don't put students' names on it, how do you respond? How do you monitor that it gets there? So, again, we want to get real clear as to priorities, put those out there, the measurements out there, build these measurement systems, and the team you see here, and I'll step out of the way, this team, that Project Parkway is not going away. Project Parkway now shifts into monitoring. Can you imagine the steering committee having dashboards? Okay, so, it's exciting, you know?
Yeah, I should also credit Dr. Collins with the updated draft that you appreciated so much. I definitely spoke with her prior to sending it to Dr. Wiggins. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
When you can get my 14-year-old to dance with a girl in eighth grade, you've done a lot of social...
Socially-emotional...
It's confidence. It's the confidence.
Right now, it's really awkward.
Tim, I also appreciated that quote earlier about the state audit. It kind of just, oh, it was an aha moment for me. I mean, it just, I don't know, I just hadn't thought of that, but...
But you notice we brought the bullets back?
Yeah.
Because we've got that red circle. But if we start ignoring what we value, and that's what this strategic plan and our mission is causing, how do we monitor the green, what Parkway values?
And I wasn't thinking, as far as school goals, I wasn't thinking beyond the state requirements, but you're absolutely right, and I appreciate that.
Yeah, I like thinking of the science wing at Central High as a sort of example for what we're trying to do on the mission side.
As always, I'm thrilled that you all are way ahead of us.
They are. They really are.
Tim didn't go here, and I keep looking for Paul. Don't hide. Where we are right now is, as we get a nod from you tonight, that let's take this on the road after the steering committee next week, where we really are meeting school by school, team by team, you know, how we had all stakeholders sign off on mission vision, learning principles, what does this sign off look like on a strategic plan? So, that's the next step that we really get, and I think we learn from our teacher evaluation committee. You know, how do we really, it's not just shop it around, it's get feedback input, and that's what we'll wait after the steering committee. How do we get this out? Because from here, then buildings and departments build their goals. So, it's important that we all buy in and understand this plan. So, Paul, we're starting to work on that rollout.
And I don't know if we talked about this at a board meeting. I know we talked about it at a steering committee meeting, so I apologize if I'm repeating this, but did we notice that the color of the house has changed?
No.
Oh, good.
I think it's flashed up there.
It's now a Parkway house.
It's a little darker.
A little red.
It's Parkway red. It's no, it's our house now. It's our house.
You mean like Parkway Central red?
No, the Parkway District colors.
Which may change.
Parkway West red.
But it was significant to us. I felt like we really took ownership that day.
And poor Tim, we keep giving him more and more things for the steering committee. The house now has multiple options, and we're going to have to come to consensus as to what's on the roof.
Right.
Where the commitments belong. So, by the end of the year, when the strategic plan comes back to you, we'll have the house defined how we think it should be.
Kind of a baby blue from Parkway West.
Might have to have all the colors.
Columbia blue, actually. At least that's what they told me when I was there.
The HGTV version. So, is the policy review finished? I mean, do you need anything else from that?
No.
We had a work session on the policy...
Yeah, that was the, yeah, I put that as the first piece.
You realize that we've done both the work session and the policy review?
Right.
And did I understand from your opening remarks that you're seeking approval of that policy this evening? Normal practice would be to put it on the consent agenda for next month, but I sense some urgency here, is that correct?
I don't know the protocol. It would probably, if it were approved this evening, it would make our work a little bit easier for the steering committee next week.
Since Carol's not here, let's do it.
I'm going to put that in the notes that you said that.
That she's watching.
We'll leave it up to our substitute parliamentarian.
Go for it.
Let's just do it.
May I have a motion and a second to approve policy AD dot BP, mission vision, learning principles, as presented in the board materials this evening?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hudson.
I should have to call me and say, "What does this mean?" Ask Dr. Santi.
15.0, call for a special meeting. There is none. 16.0, call for executive session, January 26, January 31, and February 9, 2011. They have a motion and a second. The Board of Education called for executive sessions on Wednesday, January 26, 2011, at 5:30 PM at Central Middle School, for the purpose of considering, one, preparations on behalf of the district or its representatives for negotiations with employee groups, including any discussion or work product, 610.021.9. On Monday, January 31, 2011, at 4:00 PM at the administrative building, for the purpose of considering, one, preparations on behalf of the district or its representatives for negotiations with employee groups, including any discussion or work product, 610.021.9. And on Wednesday, February 9, 2011, at 6:30 PM, and/or immediately following the regular meeting at Central Middle School, for the purpose of considering, one, legal actions, causes of action, or litigation involving the district in any confidential or privileged communications between the district or its representatives and its attorneys, 610.021.1. Two, hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting of particular employees of the district when personal information about the employee is discussed or recorded, 610.021.3. Preparations on behalf of the district or its representatives for negotiations with employee groups, including any discussion or work product, 610.021.9. And four, individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, and records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment, 610.021.13.
So moved.
Roll call, Mrs. Mogulman.
Hey, give me a second. Mr. Applebaum?
Yes.
Mrs. Feldman?
Yes.
Mr. Jacob?
Yes.
Mrs. Mogulman, yes. Dr. Sortino?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you.
I'm not supposed to say that.
Motion carries 6-0. 19.0, may I have a motion and a second to adjourn the regular meeting?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. And at this time, we are done.[1793.61]